Next item on the agenda is consider approval to purchase equipment or vehicles for the Engineers Department. I'm gonna call on Lynn to come up and address that need for us, please. And then we'll get, let you stay for a couple of both of them.
Which one Greg? I'm sorry.
Item F.
Fort, Fortly.
Oh, the Fortly, yeah, I'm sorry about that. It's a budget item that we had, and we can get this off our Sourcewell bid, whether it be in a state bid, it's a national bid that we have through Sourcewell. And the amount for the Fortlyft is thirty, I got it right here somewhere, apologize. Thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. This is for a six thousand pound Fortlyft here using a yard. Right now, we're using our old petty bone, and it's like a bull in a china shop using it. It's a big heavy machine, using, picking up several tons. And it's just a hard machine to maneuver, plus they can use it in the shop and everywhere. We've been needing this for ever since I've been here.
Is this for, inside the shop, or is it more of a yard?
It's in the shop and the yard. It's got all train tires on the front, but it's mostly...
Okay, so that's our tires, the hard, hard wheels.
Yeah, just from loading chemicals, you know, and just picking up things here on the yard that we need.
So Commissioners, you've heard the request for approval, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
They have the need for two trucks as well. Do you want to put it out on one, or do you want to...
But the trucks budgeted also?
Yes, they are.
Do you have descriptions on them, or tell us a little bit about them?
One is for, I think, John Adams, or excuse me, it's for Ronny Gay. It's like a four fifty, five fifty truck. And the other one is, I forget the other one. Karen, do you have me out?
Was it a patch crew?
It's a patch crew, that's, that's, we're swapping out, we're putting a dump bed on one that our current, Bush hog crew has. I know that's one of the trucks, is what we're doing with that one.
Is it Bush cr, Bush hog crew, do they have trucks?
That's the one we're getting, that's the newer one.
It was two, I don't remember which, but it was two different...
But they're all budgeted?
Yes, they're all budgeted, yes, that's correct.
Commissioners, you might have a question on that, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
You're giving a little dump bed for the patch crew.
Yeah, we're taking Ronny Gay's, our current bush hog truck, we're giving that to John Adams. It's, our bush hog truck needs more four-wheel drive, this is a two-wheel drive, and it gets stuck, it's a big truck, heavy truck. And John's on the highway with it all the time, we can swap and give him the two-wheel drive and get Ron a new four-wheel drive.
I think that'd be great, because I think when the bush hog crews up so high now, it's a little trouble for them to get in a step out the back. I've heard them talk about it.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion and second. Other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. If I oppose, same thing, all right, that carries. Next item G is discuss logging permit, and I know that you have something you want to present, an idea that you want to present to the commission, and not for action today, but just to get the conversation started.
We've mentioned this before in past meetings, and this manages for just a notice, just a little what it means. It's just really to plan for any, you know, conditions that, before they actually become a problem for us. And we've had issues, and nothing against the timber industry, I'm not here to make that a burden on anybody. But, you know, we have a lot of, we just got a recent, one of our bridges are out because we had forty extra tons go across the three-ton bridge that shouldn't have gone over it. It was thirteen times load, and luckily it didn't end up in a death of a truck driver. That happened on our County Road 25 down here, south of town. About four more foot, if the, if the bridge had collapsed four more feet before it did, the owner probably, the driver of the truck probably would have been, it would have been a fatal crash. But, you know, we got a lot of, a lot of times, there's haul routes is the main thing we need to really consider, because right now, there's, there's nothing to give us any alert for anything as far as a path for getting logs. I had an instance, a couple of years, two or three years ago, on Brushy Creek Road up there, goes from Friendship Road back over to Coffey County. And that's probably two or three hundred acres of timber went across one of our three-ton bridges. And I didn't know about it until they done hauled all the timber out over a three-ton bridge. So, and it's not to hurt anybody, but it's just, it gives, I need to know for our infrastructure purposes, because if you got eighty-six thousand, it don't matter what it is, it could be a dump truck or whatever, but you could have an eighty-six thousand pound vehicle go over a three-ton bridge and made it cripple it, and the next thing you know, unsuspected citizen could drive over it, and it could be fatal to them. So it's more for public, it's a public safety thing, as far as I'm concerned. That's, that's my main job, is for, is the safety of our citizens here in the county. But, you know, we have, you know, mud on the road, I can't tell you how many Fridays I had to come in and help scrape mud off roads. And I'm not saying there's, that there's, everybody's bad, but there's, we've had some of the same ones,
It's just hard to get a contact.
Yeah, you just need a contact to hey.
I know it's just no good situation, but just a little communication or just a phone call to me or my office to just say, hey, we're moving so and so, we're going, I'm the contact person, this logging crew, we're gonna be cutting on County Road, you know, fifty-seven, wherever.
So there's not gonna be any sort of a, like, my, my problem is this sort of slippery slope, it seems like me, you start with just a phone call and then, like, let's say you call them and they can't come out there or something, I mean, there has to be some kind of.
And that's something we just, like I said, we just brought this up, we can get some ideas, understand, that way we could all get ideas and try to figure something else.
Just work together, communicate, be responsible, be.
How, how are you gonna, how are you gonna provide the personnel to respond to it? I mean, my company is, I think, on, well, Frank and I, the one's based here in Andalusia, that, that harvest timber, we move about half a million tons a year. How are you going to be able to be responsive to go out and look at those sites and provide the personnel to move efficiently? I mean, there's a lot to think about. This isn't just something you should just vote on without putting a lot of thought into it, because you're a crippled industry.
We agree.
But like I said, I know, I know all these guys personally, and most of all, I have one of them's friends of mine, pretty, pretty much, so I, I work with all these guys, and, and we'll call, they'll call, and I'll call them, and say, we gotta, can y'all take care of this, and they generally take care of everything.
Is your question, how are we gonna have the personnel, or how are you gonna?
How are you?
Well, we're having to respond to it now, and I don't think the proposal, that, this premature discussion, these are ideas, and we can gain from them, we need to have a, I think we need to have an ordinance that we're proposing as a starting point. I don't think the proposal will be that we go out and observe every, every location. I think the proposal is gonna be that we'd be notified with a phone call. I'm on County Road seventy at this mile marker or whatever, and I plan to be logging for three weeks, and then we'll be able to watch.
I give a prime example, Witz here, I can give a prime example right here, I've had the same logger that come in up there, right there at his house, close to Tommy's house, and they keep, want to use the Nollingham Road to come out, when I, um.
It's a paved road.
It's a paved road, and got a three-ton weight restricted bridge at the bottom of it, I'm gonna eventually replace that, I mean, just, we got a lot of bridges, it takes a lot of money to do that, and I got, you know, stuff on my items today to discuss about this kinda stuff, but, um, but they could take the dirt road, by Witz's house, there's not a weight restricted bridge or nothing on that road, it's a little bit out of the way, but it is, but we got a weight restricted bridge, and they, and they always wanna use it.
So we're not proposing to police every location at all?
And I know, I generally know what the problem area is, we just gotta work together and, and just.
And listen, y'all guys, y'all guys are probably not even the ones we were concerned with, it's the ones that I call the fly-by-night ones that come in here. Really truthfully, because like I said, we didn't have, we didn't have a clue who it was.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think anybody's setting up a route to cross the three-ton bridge, I mean, we, we, we have.
Oh, no, no, we just wanna make sure that.
We sit down, I mean, we, we check our mileage, I mean, you can't go through the town red level, there's a lot of things that add mileage, but what we don't want is someone to say is we're moving on a track, okay, you gotta go ten miles out of the way, that costs landowner two dollars a ton if we have to do that.
There shouldn't be any problem, like you said, y'all, y'all sit down and map it out, there should be no problem, you're, you're not gonna purposely go across a three-ton bridge, so there, there'll be no problem, we're not gonna, you know, expose anything worse than, you know, like, ten miles out of the way, you know, if you've already said, hey, look, we can go this way. But this same logger, I've already told him twice, and they, they still come over the same, the hauler's still come over the same bridge, um, and I'll get behind an empty truck, they'll go over a three-ton bridge all day long, pretty much, I, I get behind them and just follow them and say, I know he's not going down that road, going over a three-ton bridge, and just drive right across it, um, 'cause the truck alone, the tractor rig's more than six thousand, or, um, six thousand pounds, so, but.
I guess, as you said, it's a slippery slope, you, you get, you get to the point where, okay, we can't cross that road with a three-ton bridge, we already know that, we're not planning, I mean, you might have a road driver that goes across a three-ton bridge, I mean, you can't physically patrol a contract driver, what he's gonna do all day, you know, you certainly don't intend on doing that, but what happens when it's, well, we really don't want you to use that road, 'cause there's, that's, you know, there's, there's houses on that road, we don't, we don't want log trucks going through there, that kinda thing.
No, it's a public road, I, you know, and y'all know, guys, I worked, I worked with one of you guys, I generally do not do that. Yeah.
That would not be a reason.
Well, let's say one more question, then we'll try to bring it back for, yes, or comment.
I just, I've got a mythology, you know, like, uh, different than any other guy.
Michael's man.
You get, you get it, like you mentioned, you got the good and bad, but it's gonna affect the good folks too, um, whether you think it or not, it's just one of the things. You know, going in, three-ton bridge, you know, call DMT, and land in, you know, County Bus from all time, you need county, south of every county.
The problem is, our county's so big, we just don't know, I don't know where they're logging, unless, if I don't get a phone call, 'cause I can't police, I depend on people to call me to tell me where they're, 'cause I can't, I can't, we got a big county, and we got a lot of, a lot of roads, and a lot of timber, I mean, that's the main industry here in commerce here in the county, um, but, uh, I just don't know where everybody, where they are, unless I get a phone call, they say, well, you got a truck going over a three-ton bridge, well, then I have to go out and send somebody to look at it, and then I gotta run down the, you know, the, uh, the hauler that's doing the hauling.
Like you said, it may be a contract truck, y'all, y'all may not be hauling it, it may be somebody else contracted truck, and.
Then that'll be on them. Yeah, then that will be on them, and it's not on, not on y'all. But just like the bridge on Eden Creek, I mean, I don't know if that guy was, that was his first trip across that bridge, I was told it wasn't his first load he carried across that bridge, it's just the second and third load's what got him, but what if my daughter or any of your family members that went across that bridge after that truck went, it was already a compromised bridge, and they were to get killed on it, I mean, that's the thing that I think about, um, and that's worst-case scenario, that's worst-case scenario.
I understand that, 'cause I mean, I, I live, like you said, I mean, I, I know exactly what you're talking about on, on Nollingham Road, but, but I don't know that that's gonna, the people that are gonna do that are gonna do that anyway, but it's not, I don't know that this, I don't understand how this is really gonna help catch those people, so you're saying, 'cause you know where they're at, you're gonna send somebody out there, I guess, to watch that?
Well, just make sure that we can agree on a route, that they kinda stick to that route, 'cause I, I generally call, I mean, I've called a lot of, a lot of people and just say, y'all need to direct your traffic, you know, different places because of this weight restricted bridge, um, but it's a, uh, like I said, it doesn't happen all the time, like I said, ninety-nine percent of the time it's not an issue, but, but it doesn't take a one fatality to make it an issue to me.
No, I agree with that, I just, I just think the people that are gonna do that, the people that are doing what we're supposed to do are gonna get burdened with this, and the people that, that don't are still gonna do what they do.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that, I just don't know.
The concerns are noted, and I think they are significant, and we need to weigh all of that very closely, and, and we'll do that, this has been a topic of discussion behind the scenes for a long time, so it's not something that is, uh, you know, but, and the reason it's taken a long time even to get to this point today is because of concerns with negative impact, unintended consequences, so we're, we're looking, considering all of those, and we'll, uh, we'll research and do, uh, a great deal more before we have even a public hearing on this, so.
Would we wanna, want like a so-called committee to meet with some of the loggers, hear their concerns, or?
Certainly can, anybody wanna volunteer?
I don't have a problem with that, man, man, you know, that way, that way everybody can, and I think that'd be one of the easier ways to hear everybody's concerns, instead of, like you said, if we have a public hearing, it's gonna be.
We can, we can do that, another commissioner will wanna join, Michael and, and.
Thanks, Kenneth.
Former committee candidate, Michael, and we'll just try to open the door for sit-downs and between now and, and the, and the, and the public hearing, if we get to that point.
I appreciate you not asking me, because I'm sure it would've lasted a couple of hours.
Yeah, we're gonna try to make it efficient for everybody, yeah, all right, all right, those, that'll be a topic for a later day, and, uh, again, I encourage you to talk to commissioners individually anytime you want to, but we'll try to get the ball rolling on that committee, what else do you have, Lynn? That was it?
That was it, as far as that goes.
Stay right there just for a second, let's talk about the shop building, uh, called the District One Shop, the District One Yard in Iff, Alabama, uh, there's an interest in possibly getting that off of our inventory, and there's steps we have to go through for that, uh, do you have, do you have thoughts from the road department, do you see any need for it at all?
I have no need at all.
Kenneth, you have thoughts?
No, I don't, I, I was the holdout on keeping a yard, because, you know, Florilla down away over there, Red Level down there, and I just wanted something that, if we needed to store or you think, house something, it would be there, you know, and, so, at times it's come in handy, and at times it, you know, it was kind of not being used, but that, that was the purpose, you know, should we have to house something in there, and, and we could head somewhere to put it or something, have it.
Right.
It, or, you, you know, without asking questions or anything, it was out, and so that's kind of the reason I kept it, 'cause it was in the part of the county that serves several areas, you know, and, so I, that's one of these, there's never no rush to do away with it.
Okay. Karen, do you have anything?
But it does need some cleaning up and fixing, and whatever we're gonna do with it.
It's had some damage, and that's one of our concerns, is, um, making sure that we keep, that we keep, needed for insurance coverage and such, and so, um, I guess that's kind of what brought this about, is seeing whether or not we need to continue maintaining something that we're not using, or try to do away with it, but I've asked the attorney to, um, review, I guess, and she's got the procedures y'all would need to take in order to, um.
The landlord next door, he asked about it, you know, should we ever do something, he like have the first opportunity.
Well, let's let Morgan identify for us what the procedures are under the law if we dispose of a piece of real estate.
Sure, so, um, the requirement is that you obtain fair market value for the disposition of the property, um, and that can be done through a couple of different mechanisms, um, one of the most efficient, I'm not saying that you need to consider this, but one of the most efficient and effective has proven to be sealed bids, what, what you receive during a certain period of time, um, that, that would satisfy, uh, any examiner's inquiry as to whether fair market value was received, um, an additional way is to obtain an appraisal and enlist it, you know, through a real estate agent, um, or try to sell it, um, uh, through kind of what we would consider a traditional transactional, um, uh, situation, um, but your requirement is to receive fair market value, um, after you take a vote to dispose of the property, so, um, first step, determine that you wanna dispose of it, second step, obtain fair market value in order to actually, um, uh, transfer title, um, and at that point, your requirements are satisfied.
Okay.
We gigged the ones to Florilla and Red Level.
We donated the one to Florilla to the city, that was last fall, Lynn.
I didn't wanna do that, I didn't wanna do that procedure.
The, we donated, uh, the one in Florilla to the city.
Yes, I, I, that's why I was pumping an email, I'm a text message I received also, we have a piece of, I know it's probably not the proper time to bring this up, but we had a, we have a piece of equipment, we got an old loader, an old military loader, like a, like a loaded, like to load logs with, and they use it for debris removal years, I'm talking about twenty, twenty-plus years ago, but it's still in that county yard, that's, that's what brought this, brought me to thinking about this, uh, we have an old loader, I got, I'm not sure if we surplus it, or what we done to it, but if we do on it, I, I would like to go ahead and maybe surplus that, and maybe get, get it off our, our books if we do, 'cause I'm not sure if we even, if that's ours, or we already surplus that years ago, but it was brought to my attention last week.
Well, let's do some research and find out if it is, then we'll clarify.
It was discussed it before.
No, I, no, I don't think it is.
It was on the books at the time, and I told them, and I had spoke about it.
Well, that's what I was looking up just then, that's, that's, it's a loader down there that we need to maybe survey.
So there's steps, there's steps we'll take, uh, if we dispose of that, and I, and again, like everything else we're doing today, we're just gonna be, uh, in, uh, notice out for discussion to get started, I suspect that we'll try to move that property off of our inventory, and that'll include.
Kenneth wanted to give it to the city of all.
He did want to.
You wanted to give it to the city of all?
Next item on the agenda is.
What's our whole business issue?
Reports, reports from staff, and while you're there, Lynn, how about giving us your report?
All right, our, our Creek Road, you know, we're getting, it's one of our resurfaced jobs this year, um, uh, we got the, uh, pipes installed, we're getting ready to replace it, all the ones on Glen Chambers, which I'll bring up shortly, those are already in place, um, so, next step on our Creek is to get those pipes in, um, we're, uh, our County Road one oh seven project, I've got the plans, the state sent the comments back last week, I've got those, uh, completed, they'd be sent back up for the final, uh, permit approval, and once that permit approval is, I have that in hand, y'all have already given permission to go and let that to bid, so I'll let that to bid, and we'll get that, that project finished.
What about the other end?
We're, we're doing that, but I'm doing that in co- and cycle, I don't wanna open up one end, and, 'cause it's, I'm trying to keep the traffic down, cutting through there now, which, I mean, everybody's pretty much using it, but I don't wanna just open it up, um, for everybody to go through there, but when they start, when they start there, it won't take us long to get that section ready on the, on the far end, on the, on the old one oh seven end, so, as soon as we get that contract awarded, then we'll go and start the, uh, the process of getting that road, uh, finished, but it should go pretty quick, I think, they, once the, the permit comments have been made, and they should, once they say those permits are made, they should go and issue the permit, so.
Is the, is the project, the highway end that you're gonna let to bid, is that large enough that you have to advertise that, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to advertise, yeah.
How long, how long?
Uh, we can, whatever the minimum is, I think it's three weeks, and then we'll award it, and then, uh, put a short time on the, on the construction, it shouldn't take long actually to do the work, so, 'cause it's, it's very short, and it's very minimal work, but it's, it's too much for us to handle on a, on a, a four-lane highway, I just don't feel comfortable for our guys to work on that, on that.
How long do you think it'll take for you to get a permit back?
I hope within a week, like I said, I get the comments back, we got, like, the comments, and hopefully this, probably in next, before end of next week's over, we'll have them, so.
Can Mr. Cobb answer a question?
Yes, sir.
All right, we've been, we've been here a week, we've been here a month.
Yeah.
Why has it taken six years to just get a permit to put the turn lane in? We can put, our end of the county just put on hold every time we turn around.
Yeah.
And it affects quite a few people that work in Montgomery, and, uh, Chapman, and all that.
Right.
There's nine miles, eighteen miles a day that's taken out of travel.
Yeah.
Now, Senator Hawley, and I personally, and you and, uh, another guy, someone gets lost, Senator Hawley pledged half the, uh, half the money for the bridge, and then somebody called Senator Hawley, told him, said, we're not interested in a bridge, now I can get him down here to back my story.
Yeah.
And now, we work, two people, that's dead right now, that had to go to Montgomery Bank for chemo, and they had to go the eighteen miles.
Right. It, it's a concern, and I, and.
It must not be too much concern to you, though, you.
None, dummy.
Well, we're working on it, with the road has been, has been all but finished, the turn lane was a late requirement by the state DOT, and so that was their requirement that they put on after this ball was rolling a long time ago, there were a number of factors, we don't wanna go through those again today, but certainly it's, uh, it's been a major concern for everybody up here, previous people as well, uh, I wish we could, I wish we could've had it done, uh, three years ago, it just didn't happen. What else, Lynn, on your report?
Our County Road twenty-five, Pageant Road, we're getting, uh, we're installing the pipes on that road as, as well, um, they started that this past week, um, on Pageant Road as well, that little short section, about two-mile stretch, we're getting ready to pave down there, um, our Glen Chambers Road, that pipe has been installed on that road, so that road's getting ready to, we give it probably another month or so to, to settle, let those pipes settle, and then we can, um, um, go and let that, or, just with a purchase order, like I said, that's one thing about our, our, where we have our, our setup here, we can just go and let that to contract, um, our Indian Creek Bridge, um, we accept our professional services proposal, um, and they'll come here the first week of June to go and start that, that bridge, uh, geotech work on that bridge, um, our Caton Road, which is one of the, one I was talking about, a, a three-ton bridge, we're actually replacing with a railroad tank car, that'll open it more to more legal loads, uh, we've got that one, and the Lower Hill, um, Road, um, Bridge right there, we got those, those pipes were ordered last month, and, uh, we should be getting those, hopefully pretty soon, to get those, those two bridges replaced with larger, um, culvert pipe, and, uh, get those opened up to more, um, legal loads.
Okay.
Our signalization, um, due to the, um, timing, uh, of the signs, when they come and come off, um, I, I only budgeted about thirty-five thousand dollars, I was looking more of it just the blinking signs, and for the most part, that, that would've worked, but, uh, we have since gotten quotes for those, um, replace a full amount of cost light signals, uh, at the, at seventy-seven to forty-three, so, seventy-seven, seventy, seventy and sixty-seven at the Horn Hill, and at Fleeta, and at Strong, um, those, Strong's about fifty-two thousand dollars, get that back, and we got signs up, we got signs up that, that are, that give people enough advanced warning, but to get the actual blinking signs back up, Fleeta's about sixty thousand, uh, and Babbies are right around twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, for it, and again, the cost is more in the, in the timing of the, of the signs for that, you know, I told you that the superintendent agreed to pay fifty percent, we had an agreement to do about fifty percent of the, the cost share on that.
Is that Fleeta and Strong?
Fleeta and Strong, yes, um, but that's where we are on that right now.
Is he, is he willing to pay that fifty at the new rate?
I haven't got with him, we just got these quotes last week, so.
Communicate with him and let us know then.
And again, this sausage, uh, Connecticut sausage site, we're, um, we're at a, a point that the building pad is complete, they would've started, uh, um, footers today on that project, uh, it hadn't been for the, the rain we've gotten, already, they have, they were starting to get rid of, do some steel tying and some concrete pouring for the footers, um, our Cross Murray Road, um, the, uh, all the railways been cleared on, on the crossroad, and I'm trying to get it, um, up to, to where we can get it based, um, again, the rain had not caught us, we, we, we had a pretty good showing this weekend, ended up being for the rain, but we're still gonna, we're making progress on that, um, and I've got ahold of the, uh, local, um, cover electric this morning about helping taking down some of those larger trees on, on Murray Road, um, some of those are dead, and I, I just don't feel comfortable for our guys working on those dead ones while they're, uh, we're trying to dig those up, bad things can happen with that, um, but, uh, the subgrades is getting close, and that, the whole road's already been, uh, surveyed and staked out for subgrade, so the guys are ready to move, start moving some dirt there, um, our Music Road Bridge, that's a road that's, you know, got damaged by a, a, a mobile home that was pulled out of there, that did some damage to the bridge, um, you know, we, since we bought a, a temporary bridge, it's a ten-foot bridge, sixty feet long, and, uh, we're gonna try to get that thing installed, uh, this week or next, up there, adjoining the bridge, and I've already, I've already talked to, uh, Charles Dixon Company already as well about as far as, uh, a new alignment on the road, and we're gonna do some things to, to help reclaim some old right-of-way, um, uh, to get that road, it's a very, very, a hairpin turn, and we're looking to maybe straighten that thing out just a little bit, but, uh, we're the same, uh, geotech company that's doing the work on our Indian Creek Bridge, will be doing the work on that one, so that same week they come up in June to do, to do that geotech work, um, our George Lundie, our Hogfoot, and our Connect River Church, uh, Bridge, the one that was damaged by that log truck, um, uh, we're submitting the hydraulic cemental, uh, this, matter of fact, today, we're submitting that, getting that cemental made for that, those three, uh, flat bridges, um, again, our Brogdon Road, our topsoil's been completed on that job, uh, memory and tobacco, we started to get some tops on those shoulders, but it's flat, we're, it's not that big a need, but we're, we're trying to get that when we can get it, um, let's see right here, our FEMA, again, we're just waiting on a, KIP made our, uh, Group B cemental on the, uh, eighth of last month, and we're just waiting, that's three hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, that should be coming to us pretty quick on that, um, and we still have, um, Group F and G, which is about two hundred sixteen thousand and a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars on those two remaining projects as well.
When will those be, some?
They'll, they'll be submitted pretty, pretty soon as well, yeah.
You've completed the work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those will be completed here shortly, um, new hires, I've hired, uh, uh, seven new people, I have some internal transfers, but I've got basically seven new employees, we'll have seven new employees with the county, uh, that start, that'll start work, one started this week, uh, and we'll have some that'll start later on, within a week to two weeks, so, and then, let's see here, we have our, um, our SIMs, um, our GPS units will be installed today here in our vehicles that we've discussed about, you know, keeping track of our vehicles, and then I guess the contract on our, actually for our county information, uh, management care, and is that contract, that's, y'all have already sent that contract back up, so we're just waiting on that, that software, uh, to be installed here, so, um, let's see, our, our paint beads, uh, we're gonna, we've ordered some more to, uh, we're gonna start painting again next week, uh, so far, we painted, well, I'm talking about paint, we painted, uh, right at thirty-six miles last month, most were down around District Three, we did County Road Four, ten, um, eighteen, eighty-nine, and we did seventy from, uh, Antioch to three thirty-one, and five points, uh, that area, and we'll be painting again, and typically about a week, that's about a weekend a week if weather's good, so, um. We still got one more dump truck that's remaining on order, that's to come in, uh, I hope it's gonna be here any day, we've still, we've still been waiting on that truck to come in, uh, again, the forklift, y'all just approved that, we're getting it off our Sourcewell bid, um, work orders in the county, we didn't do any, any shoulder clipping this past month, uh, but, but again, we sprayed thirty-six miles, we, uh, scraped eighteen of our bridges, um, grading, we did approximately, uh, three hundred seventy miles, uh, last month, we did seventy-three and one, ninety-two and two, a hundred twenty-nine and three, seventy-eight and four is what we did, uh, last month, uh, herbicide, we sprayed around a hundred fifty miles of herbicide, um, center line, that's center line miles, so basically we sprayed three hundred five miles.
Were you spraying the herbicide, or we continued that through the?
We're doing more coking grass spraying right now, 'cause the guys are out bush hogging right now, and, uh, uh, but, it's amazing, since we kinda slowed down on our, our, our permit process, let contract, we only had three, uh, permits this past month on, um, on driveways, but we've placed, um, about, uh, eighty signs this past month, we did a lot of regulatory warning, a lot of twenty-five nine oh one, uh, forty-three regulatory warning signs, uh, and supposed on nine oh one stuff as well, so, but, uh, that's from my department, so.
A lot going on, any questions for anyone, is it, thank you, appreciate your report, appreciate what y'all do, um, let's go to cats, I think there were some issues related to cats, maybe an interest in some vehicles that you wanna bring to us, it wasn't on the agenda, but we'll, uh, let you present that at this time, please, ma'am?
Yesterday, um, AlDOT, GELDA conference call announcing that, uh, Alabama has been approved to order vehicles off the Georgia State bid, which is fantastic, they've been trying to get this done for like two years, um, they also made in their announcement that this is, uh, first come, first served, and, um, it's only open till two thousand twenty-five, so, they're saying, on top of that, they will pay ninety percent of the bus cost, so, they said, pack it out this morning at eight forty, we are approved for four, you have approved for cats to receive four, and I'm reminding you, two of those were off CARES Act, they were free, or are free, so, um, I would like to take the opportunity to get seven instead of just the four, so add three, and on top of that, add a, um, van that is also handicap accessible for traveling, for trainings and classes and such, with the cost being at only ten percent to us, I have given y'all a copy of what the outline of the bus looks like with the cost, and, um, all but the minivan, they did not have that ready, and I gave Karen a picture, uh, to see what the outside of the bus looks like.
So you're asking, uh, we, uh, we've already approved the purchase of four, the expectation for that was a match of what, when we approved those, what was our match?
Two, and at that time, we, it was seventeen thousand each, of what we paid, but we have received that back since I sold the vans that we received.
That was the one that we got, that really.
Mm-hmm, and they have all four been sold, we're waiting on paperwork for one to be completed, as soon as we get that back, uh, Lawrence County has purchased those two, and I would go make that transaction.
So what's the total investment that you're proposing?
I just got all this information, I have not put any numbers together yet, um, I highlighted the total cost of the van with, um, the graphic package, so that you could kinda get an idea of what. I highlighted the total cost of the van with the graphic package so that you could kind of get an idea of what. But this just happened yesterday afternoon, so I've not had time to sit down and put anything else together. Other than they're paying ninety percent and you're not going to get a deal better than that. And it's first come, first served, so once the money has depleted, that's it, it's gone and so I'm trying to take.
So what you're recommending is the four we already have approved and the three additional plus the van.
Right.
So that's total eight vehicles, what are we using, how many do we have running right now?
We have five.
Five routes, five?
Five buses.
Daily, okay, are those daily on the road?
Yes, sir.
All five of those, one's not a?
One is a, is a backup, but we use it pretty much on a daily basis. And it's a two thousand and ten model.
Yeah.
It's already given me, costs a lot of money to keep it on the road right now.
But in addition to the ten percent on these three, so we have, so you say we have five, four of them are, are regular and the third, fifth one's a backup that you are using.
At this time.
But if we added three, then you're looking at having to have operators for three additional to fully utilize them.
Yes, sir, in the future. Right now, I would probably just like to add one more full-time driver and look at a part-time driver, but I'm not ready to.
So we would, so we would just mothball three vehicles?
Well, no, sir, I would turn around and sell the other two, because you have to get rid of what you get. So I would sell what I have and the two newest ones I have are nineteen models. So they're getting close to the usable life being over.
Yeah, but we're, right now, we're using four on routes.
We are.
And you're proposing that we buy the four to replace those plus three new ones, so we'll have seven.
That's right.
So three of those will be mothballed because we haven't approved operational cost for those.
Uh, that's correct.
Do you may have questions or?
I can kind of support, you would be able to buy these vans at this price and they're available.
Ends in two thousand, two thousand twenty-five, so we have a limited time also on being able to purchase them.
I can see kind of the point of giving it, so we would have be able, we have one to go down or something, we always got something there to back it up. If you do add a route, you have it, so.
And I know right now you stay pretty booked, because I know people.
I turned.
I know people have called and they can't get on because they didn't call within a certain amount of time because you're already booked.
We're just booked up, we don't, because we, we need to grow, but we can't grow at this point right now with not having the bus or the manpower.
The. The match looks like even at ten percent, it's about fifteen thousand apiece.
And remember, two of those buses cost us nothing, they're free because of CARES Act money.
So we're spending federal money, is what we're doing on these, is really where we are.
And then when you get these, you'll sell your old ones?
Yes, sir.
But you'd still end up with seven.
Which was my goal to begin off with, so.
Well, we haven't approved operating that, I don't know, I mean, it's a pretty, pretty heavy increase when you look at the operational cost for those additional three vehicles. And the cost of labor, full-time employees.
I see where you're going.
That's just a concern I have on it. You see, you see the proposal, the recommendation, I guess, is that we move on this. Is there a thought to move on four, five, six, seven? So that we can get it in front of the line?
Because you run it one basically every day anyway, it's supposed to be a backup.
Supposed to be a backup, right.
You've got four regular routes, you're supposed to have a backup, but you pretty much should run it daily, so basically you're running five trucks without a backup.
Yes, sir.
So if you had six, you'd have one with a backup, if you have seven?
Potential to grow.
Potential to grow later on, like I said, because I see the potential of us having to grow it anyway because we have people that's calling now the Kendrick route.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of this is fairly funded anyway.
Yes, sir.
So what, tell us, tell us about your dispatch program that you're under, I know there are a couple of options for dispatch. What is, what, what is the term for what we do here?
Demand response, well, tell me what you want to know, I'm, I'm not following what you.
Well, is there?
So we run by scheduling, we require at least a twenty-four hour notice of call, and no guarantee that we have availability on the next day. Because we book up so fast, we start taking rides for the next month on the third Monday of each month. We have dialysis Monday through Friday, that are regular routes for, and they stay on the schedules because it is a life-altering medical that they need. So we get calls continuously needing more rides on that, which we don't have the capability to do. Another thing of these two van, vans that I'm looking at, they will haul two wheelchairs at one time instead of just one. Right now, presently, the vans that we have only haul one. So that will help us in capacity, because on top, we also haul passengers to facilities that are in wheelchairs. And we have to use more than one van to get them there at the same time because of only being able to haul one wheelchair at a time. So these vans will increase that capacity to help us with having to have less than one van go, you know.
So you're getting a better, you're getting a greater capacity just from design only?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So that's a benefit in itself. Right now, dispatch, we, you know, we use the, still the paper, because I'm a paper trail girl. But we also use the, the TripMaster and it's working great. I mean, I, we've, we've grown, but we can't access some of the stuff that we want to do because we don't have the availability to add more people. So these vans are helping us to get to that point.
I know we've added dispatcher, right, so you have two now, full-time dispatch?
I have, I have one full-time dispatch and I have one fill-in dispatcher. The fill-in dispatcher is also fill-in driver and fill-in for in-home service.
Ms. Baxley, how many vans do you want?
I would love seven. For the, for the potential to grow. I'm willing to take what you're willing to give. Four I have already been approved, two of them, like I say, cost us nothing. So I will take whatever you would give me, but seven is my goal at this time. With the admin van, don't forget that, but that's just something that helps the county in my mind because of sending drivers to training, dispatchers to training, meter training and to meetings. And it's also handicap accessible, so if I needed to get out myself and go, if we were in this situation, it's also accessible today. That's just on the table.
I'd love to know the cost related to it, if you're ready to act on something, we can do that, I'd love to know the cost of the additional staff. And I question the cost of mothballing.
Sure. Pretty much, you know, I'm, I'm with the seven, of course, now, you know, I'm very partial to this cats, all up into this up in it.
I appreciate that.
Really push for it and it kind of got real weak at one time and wanted to see it active, see it, stay active and it has really grown. And so I'm very appreciative of what y'all do.
What's the possibility of extending hours so that people like, say, six or six-thirty or seven?
I've actually had that conversation with Versinius because of them having people come in so much earlier, it's just hiring a driver that's willing to run those hours. And I could do part-time on that, part-time driver. So it's just, there's a number of opportunities, we just don't have the accessibility at this time to do it because of not having the vans for one to put them in if we were to hire another driver.
What are, what are driver hours now?
They are here at seven-thirty and I have them gone by four-thirty if possible. Sometimes they have to stay a little over because of doctor's appointments or.
We don't stagger any of the services now?
Not at this time, that is a goal to start, yes, sir.
Could do that with the four we have.
No, because of the way our routes run now, we already have set up, they start at seven forty-five in the morning. And we have so many already on schedule, dialysis, just for example, that it'd be hard to change anything.
All right. Any more questions, comments, is there a motion?
I think we need to order some for the ones we got, some of them that end of life now.
All right, what are you, what is the motion?
I don't, I don't, right now, let's see, and like I said, which we got to discuss a little bit prior to, like I thought, the administration van, I don't know, but I don't have a problem with those ones, especially if we're going to expand our services. And I think it's a great thing for this community, a great thing for this county.
Absolutely.
So I have, I don't have a problem with the seven, especially if you're going to basically get two for free, so you're only going to have the amount of six, so you're on like fifteen thousand on the other, roughly five. When they come in, we're going to sell all the old ones we got, now, we're going to make fifteen thousand back, probably not, but we can maybe make half of them back. On some of them, so I would say with seven. And let's see, see what we can for cats, like I said, it's a big benefit to the community, I'm like, yeah.
So the motion is to approve ordering seven, seven of buses, if you will.
Especially if you're getting them for, for ten percent of what they cost.
All right.
If we don't use them, we sell them later.
And at this time, once ordered and paid for, we should have back within thirty to forty-five days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any other questions or comments on?
Well, how long have we waited for vans that we couldn't use, two years?
Over.
So we, that's, that's all factors into what we're going to.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion and second, let's, let's vote before you leave the podium, you may want to make a comment or something. All in favor, say aye. Propose same sign, all right, that's approved.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, any other staff reports? Commissioners, do you have anything? Trying to get through before dinner. All right, is, do you have any? Karen? If there's a motion adjourned, thank you, Michael, we stand adjourned.